Yeah, I know.
I'm probably gonna be doing that. Sit there.
A long way to go for. A long way to go for.
Somebody here. My.
Couple of council members have been running a little late. So we're gonna go ahead and start with the citizen's appearance. Well, no, I'm sorry. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To call any board, have our citizen's appearance.
This thing on, is that even turning on? All right. First of all, congratulations to the new faces. Glad to see you guys here. Really excited that y'all on, on page six. The city, the citizens had a chance to let their voices be heard. That's why you guys are sitting here. You know, I think that it was pretty evident, pretty clear, in my opinion, that, that the citizens of Godly were not happy with the direction of this town. You know, I, I want to just say as, as you guys come on board and, and as y'all, you know, embark in your journey on the council, don't forget why you're here. You know, you're here to do the people's will, to, to vote, to exercise your judgment based on what, what all these people behind me would like for you to do. You have a duty. You have a duty. Every one of you volunteered for this job. This isn't something anybody forced you to do. Every one of you volunteered for it. And if you didn't wanna do this job, I don't think you would've volunteered. So I thank you for, for stepping up and putting yourself in this position. Couple things going on tonight that I want to express my concern about is the city attorney. The city attorney works for the city. That's their responsibility. They are here to represent the city as a whole. If they're gonna continue to represent the mayor, we need a new city attorney. That's y'all's responsibility, is to make sure that everybody in place is doing their duty. I'm looking to y'all to hold these people accountable. The mayor, he doesn't wanna do his job, hold him accountable. This is our time, this is y'all's time, to let the people's voice be heard. So, once again, I wanna congratulate y'all, I wanna tell you thank you, and look forward to, to the upcoming year and, and what happens. So, thanks again.
What was your name again?
Dustin Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Also, I appreciate your time. My wife, my four-year-old daughter, myself, we're here tonight to embolden you council members to take strong action and representing we, the people, tonight. Speaking from my wife, she would like to thank each of you for your service. Her father served as fire chief down in Rosori, Texas, and on the city council for decades. And she understands personally what kind of sacrifices you all made in your home life to be here and to serve. To begin, I'd like to convey a message from General Flynn from the previous years. He said, "Local change makes national impact." My, uh, we, my wife and I, we firmly believe this to be true. We need local change. We need local action now, not just for Godly, Texas, but we need it for the nation that we love. We'll come back to that in a moment. What kind of change are we to call to improve? We have no confidence in Mary A.C. No confidence in him to continue serving as mayor of Godly. For five months since January, he's kept the city of Godly offices closed. The hiring has been derailed and stalled for city positions that need to be filled. This has left our local government non-functional for essentially half a year. This alone shows its inability to do this job. And that alone would be, would be enough, but then we can go on from there. What about the weaponization of City Hall? The weaponization of the police department? And the city attorney? During the last seven months, or excuse me, during the last half a year, we've also seen these parts of our local government be used by the mayor against his political opponents, mainly, uh, we've seen obviously that the meaningless and unwarranted arrest of council member Jennifer Thompson. We've seen, uh, how that moved on, well, I guess in part with that, to my knowledge, what I've heard or understood is that she's not been allowed to face her peers under those parties, under those pretenses. The thing going on from there, there's, uh, the whole purpose behind that, it seems, is to rig a council boat. And in which that boat, the mayor displayed openly some coercion of fellow council members for also the appearance of installing the city attorney. That city attorney has been installed to represent the interests of Mary A.C. And not we, the people of Godly, Texas. She's been installed to derail the furthering of council member business items.
You have a thought, yes, I'm sorry.
And installed to subvert council meetings, particularly when they do not fit her schedule. And installed as well to amass a humongous attorney fee that we have, that we, the people, must foot the bill. You know, from what I've seen or heard, that purportedly the budget for that was twenty thousand dollars, or up to over fifty thousand apparently, which on this trajectory, we'd be looking at over a hundred and twenty thousand. And this is for a lawyer who doesn't check her emails, who dominates meetings and demands that such meetings are done on her time. We have no confidence in this city attorney. Are we taking this all in? Is this the kind of local government we want, one that wastes our time and money, installs appointments through government weaponization, subverts the rightful and timely representation of we, the people? Wages a half-year-long shutdown? And when asked for greater financial accountability, responds by having political enemies arrested?
That's your thought, Mr. Martin.
Off twenty-five more seconds. This has the appearance of organized cover-up. So what are we asking if I were to skip to the end of this? Local action makes national impact. If we allow this to happen here at home, you know, how can we expect these problems to not occur nationally? How can we expect these tactics not to be aimed at each of us personally? So with that in closing, we ask for forensic audit, removal of Mary A.C., and the removal of the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Here's your vote.
One, two, check. Now, you're making. This. Oh, it's not working. Anyway, I just wanted to congratulate the new council members who got elected. When you realize they're not, it's an honor, and hopefully it's a privilege, that you'll take very seriously. It's not gonna be an easy job, but the people have confidence in you that you can turn this thing around. Godly has been a city for almost two hundred years, and it's a great place to live and raise your family. That's why all these people have moved here, that's why the people are here tonight. They care about their city, and that's great. None of us, however, are proud of how the last few months have gone here in the city government. We are depending on you to turn it around and give us something to be proud of again. But, you're gonna have to work together, all of you. Stop all the name-calling, all the pickering, you're gonna have to get along. You don't have to agree on everything, but you need to respect each other's opinions. I'm sure all of you love this city as much as I do, or you wouldn't be doing this, you wouldn't be putting your time out. We're gonna have to do what's best for the city of Godly. We've got to get the city open back up. You guys have to find some middle ground. Sometimes you have to agree to disagree, and that's okay. You're not always gonna get your way, but the citizens of Godly that elected you expect you to do what's best for the city, and I think you will. We need to get a city manager hired to run the city. You need to get a good one to make your job easier. That position doesn't need to be anyone's neighbor or friend, or anyone that lives here, it needs to be the most qualified person you can find. They have a big job in front of them. Lastly, try not to be distracted by the outside noise, by the people that don't live in our city. You were elected by the people of the city of Godly to represent them, not to listen to people from other towns or areas. That's not your job. You have a chance to do great things in a crucial time in our history. Good luck to all of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Peter Branch.
Good evening. Three months ago, I spoke here and I expressed my personal opinion that there was no legal basis for the arrest, incarceration, and strip search of Councilwoman Jennifer Thompson, that she had not violated the Texas Penal Code thirty-seven point one oh, subsection A, subsection one, tampering with a governmental record. Because what she had altered was an electronic copy of a governmental record, a city council agenda in this case, not an actual governmental record. Just like if I took a photocopy of a city council agenda made available to the public tonight, altered it or destroyed it, that would not be illegal. In other words, I allege that even if everything in the arrest warrant for Councilwoman Thompson were true, that did not constitute criminal activity. Apparently, this opinion was the correct legal conclusion because unbeknownst to me at that time, when I spoke here previously, the county attorney's office had already contacted Councilwoman Thompson and informed her only three days after her illegal arrest, incarceration, and strip search, that they would not prosecute her for the crime alleged in that warrant. So if I were a visitor to a resident of a taxpayer in, or especially a council member for the city of Godly, I would want to know one thing in a hurry. If there was no lawful purpose for her arrest, what was the purpose? And from my perspective, there are only two things that could be true. Either the officer who swore out their arrest warrant was too stupid to take a set of facts, compare them to the written law, and determine whether or not a crime had been committed. Or if he was unsure about the answer, to consult a more knowledgeable source such as a prosecutor, and come to the correct legal conclusion, in which case he should not be entrusted with a badge and a gun. Or the officer who swore out the arrest warrant was not that stupid. He knew that Councilwoman Thompson had not committed a crime, but he proceeded to arrest her anyway mere minutes before a city council meeting, at which hers would have been the deciding vote on a number of agenda items. So, uh... Those are the only two other options I see available if there was no lawful purpose for her arrest. So which one was it, Godly? What was it that got Councilwoman Thompson arrested? Thrown in a cage and stripped searched for unlawful purposes? I'm counting on you to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Jennifer Thompson?
Congratulations, guys. Being in those seats, you will be faced with a lot of hard decisions, as well as challenges with relations. I will be here to support you in every way, my voice is no longer silenced. First off, educate yourself and know your rights. Try not to leave opportunity for manipulation, or the ability to scare, threaten, or sway you from doing what you know is right. In my experience and opinion, WHF, the city attorney, confuses chapter twenty-two law with chapter twenty-five. We are a chapter twenty-two. Citizens watch the city attorney Google items as she sits in front of the council in order to give advice. That is not a very good sign of an educated attorney. WHF obviously has failed us, not researching or getting to know who we are, or why we are in the state that we are in. Attorneys know how to identify red flags when it comes to wrongdoings. Unfortunately, they have turned their heads when these things concern the mayor, PD, and other employees. Furthermore, spending an overage close to three times the amount we have budgeted for the city attorney line, not including the entire billing, is a huge concern. There's not been much to show for that money that is spent, nor has there been an addendum brought to this council to approve. They are well aware that there needs to be an addendum when there is overage on these lines, as you saw in the last meeting when they stated that about the RFP. A good mayor will address things when things are not right. My question is, why does he allow RFP to continue the path of unprofessionalism? Allowing officers and staff to call me and other council members horrible names, releasing personal information, and plotting the removal of council members? Michael, watch your back, 'cause what I've heard, you're next. I find that quite interesting. Mayor, you've stated numerous times that you were up at the city hall, working for eight to nine hours a day. I'm curious to know what exactly you were doing, because there's been numerous times where you have no clue on what's going on, nor do you know how to do anything. You've stated numerous times that Kathleen Rice, the interim city secretary you hired, has done a really good job. How do you know that she's doing a good job when you have no idea what she's actually supposed to be doing? I mean, sure, you can see that she's working, but how are you verifying the work is getting done correctly and efficiently? And why did your instructor not to communicate or release anything to city council? This is a huge liability, not only for the city, but her as well. She does work at the will of the city council. You've stated numerous times the police department's doing a great job. So you need to tell me falsely arresting someone, not following up on complaints, and harassing particular officials is doing a good job? Or is it that they're doing a good job according to the things that you want and need? Protect yourself versus the city itself. You sat on the dais tapping Jan Whitehead and Marion Matthews to initiate a motion and/or vote in favor of, in order to ensure the things you wanted to pass. Why did you have to do that? You'd already taken my vote away, which means you already had the votes that you needed. There are multiple reasons why I feel like you need to be removed from your seat. The mayor showed no disregard to motions approved by council. The mayor shows no disregard to emails from council. The mayor shut down the entire city at his own discretion, then failed to attend two city meetings called by three council members in order to hire employees to open City Hall. Candidates showed up to these meetings, some coming as far as Arlington to attend. It was embarrassing as a city where there was not a forum, having to apologize, and then they had to turn around and go home due to lack of forum. In a meeting shortly thereafter, the mayor stated he had no knowledge of anyone submitting resumes, a blatant lie. The mayor verbally admitted multiple times he had no idea what was going on, he's just the mayor. The mayor verbally attacked a citizen and candidate with vulgar verbiage and hand gestures after slamming his fist on the dais, cutting me off mid-sentence, stating adjourned at the meeting on five-six. That citizen is now sitting on the dais. With the absolute most votes, the citizens have spoken. These malicious attacks have been happening since December and are continuously getting worse. The mayor has created his own agenda and is implementing it without regard to the city council while ignoring their items that are covered.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
As I have, I have come up here many times and have specifically addressed your behavior, Mayor, over the last year. You have not gotten any more professional, but have only become more unprofessional. You have not performed your duties as leader of this town. You have had contempt for your council, and gone as far as weaponizing the police in this town for your own agenda. You have not collaborated or respected your council for important decisions like hiring. You are responsible for this town being closed, you are responsible for this town being closed. You could have made different decisions, you could have showed up to meetings. It has been said that you are the CEO of this, of this town. That responsibility ultimately lies on you as the leader of this town. Your behavior on the dais has been disrespectful, repeatedly disrespectful. Vulgar motions towards someone in, from your town is absolutely unacceptable. And I am shocked. I know you've yelled at me specifically, but to actually make a motion like that from the dais, I don't know how anybody could have any confidence in you as a leader of this town. I would recommend that you leave this position and allow someone else the opportunity to leave this town if you're so upset that you, you can't actually perform your duties in this town. The legal team has been disrespectful and rude repeatedly towards members of the council. They have been unwilling, the, the team, the legal team has been unwilling to perform duties a council member has requested. This would be considered gross insubordination in any other area of employment. Gross insubordination, grounds for immediate dismissal. So I request this council remove this mayor and fire this law firm immediately.
Mary Delo?
Hello, Council, and thank you for your service, and congratulations to those that are undefeated. I pray every night that you will support our community and listen to the constituents and the taxpayers here in the city. There's a lot of talk outside of the city that come in, and I hope that you will listen to those taxpayers that are in the city, because there's a lot of other talk going on. A.C., I commend you for holding it together and being here and working hard and trying to keep things together. I know the city hasn't been closed for five months, in fact, it has been open, and I know that Kathleen's done a great job, and our attorneys are keeping, uh, things running like they should. There are a couple things on the agenda, and it just, just permits the fact that, you know, we need to work together, because there's several items on here that are duplicating. And I think that if you, I commend Scott maybe for sitting on here to have some policy and procedures in place, because duplicating the agenda items is a waste of time for everybody. There was the discussion on possible actions, scheduling dates for budget workshops on here twice. There's another item of discussion, possible action, declaring the confidence and the ability of Mayor A.C. to be easy. I vote confidence in you, A.C. I think you've done a great job. You have worked hard and tirelessly for our city and our government here to keep us rolling, so I commend you for that, and I hope you can hang in there against all the naysayers that are here tonight. I did also question an item on the agenda about hiring Officer Quinteros. I thought he was already hired in a previous meeting, but maybe I don't have the minutes to be able to, to talk about that. But I pray for all of y'all, and that your decisions are made in the best interest of the community members here in healthy Texas. We're a great city, we want to be great again, and whatever I can do to help you, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delo.
Hey, Delai?
Good evening, Council. I wanted to congratulate...
It's not working.
It's not, is it?
Nope.
Okay, I'll speak later. I would like to congratulate the incoming members of the council, having ran a campaign twice.
Hold my time till I do, or if I really do like to do it, whatever, hold my time till I pass out. Thank you. Speaking on, I have a key to arm.
Okay, there it is, sir.
Appreciate you holding my time. Thank you. Um, speaking on item Q, and I first, congratulations on those that were elected and reelected, and again, thank you guys for your service. Um, item Q is the Veterans Memorial at the park. Um, for those that don't know, Mr. Papenfuss was working on this behind the scenes as well. It's great to finally see it on the agenda. Mr. Yarborough, thank you for this. Um, so why am I talking on item Q when so much is going on in the town? Well, the 29th is Memorial Day, and we're very close to that. We have a memorial in town that names all the individuals from Godly. For the record, I am not from Godly. I don't live in Godly. I do spend my time here, my children go to school here, and I spend a lot of money in Godly. So I'm one of the people from outside the town that speaks up, and I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it today. Um, Memorial Day, I stopped counting at 26 individuals that lost their lives, and what I can tell you is that every single one of them raised their hands and gave an oath, just like you did, to support and defend the Constitution, among other things. And I can also tell you that every single one of them, if they were asked today, how would they want to be remembered? It would not be with alcolates at football games, it would not be with commercials, and it would not be with memorials over there like at the park, which is in horrible disarray. It would be live your lives, supporting what they gave theirs for to allow you to do. Live your lives in a way that supported our constitutional rights, that didn't have personal agendas, that didn't support local entities, when it was hard to do the right thing at the right time, especially when nobody's looking. To open up hiring to the enormous talent pool available, to not unilaterally do it with one individual, whether it be a secretary, an attorney, a chief of police, or whatever, to open that up. Why does Godly not deserve the largest talent pool to draw that from? So as you go forward, please consider what you raise your hand to, and think about as we approach Memorial Day, the individuals that gave their lives, how they would want you to represent what you have chosen to volunteer at. Don't do what the school board just did, which was enact the policy to remove the citizens' ability. Y'all know that they just added a new policy that requires three elected officials, so somebody can come up here and speak to, can speak on something? Don't do what they did and go the opposite way of what the people of this town just asked you to do. Remember what you round. Prioritize what you're gonna do and what's the best interest of everybody involved with this town, especially taxpayers and voters, of course. And remember, as we approach Memorial Day, that those individuals would want to be remembered by, by you guys leading this town and what you've been entrusted with to uphold that part of the Constitution. If I was on the wall of the honor over at the school with what they did yesterday, I would, I would demand my picture be pulled off. It's horrible what they did. Don't go the opposite way, please. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, that's it. Okay, we're going into executive session. Roger.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay. Council now going into, uh, executive session.
Attorney, can you state the subject? That's the guy I'm going to take in executive session for six years. Mayor, can you read the subject? Read the two items.
Don't you have that phone on?
The city council will hold executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consternations with attorney, consternations with interim city attorney, to seek advice of said attorney about any legal matters. Item B, Texas Government Code, section 551.074, discussion of the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, interviewed for this city administrative position.
I guess we'll see, because Scott was there to see that meeting. He saw, right, the names, right?
Are you happy?
Hello.
Yeah, thanks.
You want to sit down?
No, it's fine.
What about pizza?
Right, now you take it.
I brought snacks.
I just needed that.
I'm just here to have a line.
Well, we got kind of a peanut right here.
Basically, a little. He starts playing that to get us around it, but it's all over.
We can't watch the hockey game.
All right, we're going to, uh, break in vain. We're going to work on a discussion next on the page. Discussion of possible action or consternation to the other group, call it up to the election board.
So Quinteros was hired like you allowed him to. He was just never properly confirmed. Is that what you mentioned, probably? Probably begging me to just, begging me to just put it on the agenda and confirm, and I tried that, finally got on the agenda, so I'm sorry it took so long. I'm sorry your family went through so much. Um, but we are going to confirm, hopefully. Um, so I'll make the motion to accept the confirmation of Officer Matthew Quinteros of the other police department, police officer.
I'll second that. On the third, I'm sorry. We decided to do this.
Verbal.
Scott?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. All right. Now we're gonna go back into executive session.
Oh, what? For which I am-
One item? Don't we give them out?
So it's for the second matter, Alyssa Dunleavy, executive session, for interviewing the city minister.
Duncan Libby, I asked to come back out so Matt could go home with his family.
And that's why I'm thinking, if the side of the wish comes, they're going back for it.
I gotta put in the new driveway that turns almost a hundred and eighty degrees. It'd have to turn right.
Don't you ever ruin the backside of the shaft?
Yeah, but I want that new garage, 42, I know the four.
Oh.
And I want to put two layers of glass in above it, so the roof line will still match, because I'm gonna take it down four feet. That way I can drive in. It's on top of the hill.
Okay.
And I looked at it a million different ways, and it's the easiest. I got all the rock, I got all the bricks. Well, I'm saying what's on the house. I got fifteen, twenty yards of that rock, still whenever we're building the house, and I got ten pounds of the brick that goes, that goes to the house, still, I'd like to buy a brick for it. The bricks are so stony. I can feel it. Mike?
Yeah. Mike, someone says, since we have all the agenda items, can you make sure to speak into the mic? I can't hear you, apparently.
Tell them I'm telling you what to do.
I'm real disappointed.
Don't run score, run shutout, run shutout.
Real disappointed.
Let's go Vegas. Uh, he's watching the scores. Minute left, four zero Vegas. It's a minute left, four zero Vegas. Yeah. I don't think people will be happy right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the Edme camp, since I'm a Vegas fan, so nobody likes me here. I say I'm in the Edme camp, because I'm a Vegas fan.
All right.
That's a quarter mile.
Oh, okay.
All right, we're gonna break in vain. We're going to have a discussion. Well, I think you have reports. Copy, should I?
Uh, approve the beam.
Yes, we have to consent agenda forms.
Yes, we need to approve the, uh, minutes of regular council meeting in February seven. So you have a motion. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting in February seven, two thousand and three.
I'm starting, ready.
Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Motion carried. The Blue Department reports should be attached. Kathleen, is that correct?
I have no further. I have no further. I believe, you can tell us here now. We are-
So for the police department, we had a total of one hundred and ninety-seven calls for service, uh, to arrest, one being a felon, one being a misdemeanor, uh, one being assault, one being possession. Uh, we bought, uh, fifty-three hundred dollars worth of stolen cases in the courtroom. Uh, we made a total of one hundred and sixty-five track stops, uh, thirty-eight result citations, one point seven more.
What was the time period?
I think, uh, April first to April third.
How many officers do we have now? Full-time members there?
Uh, full-time, we have- Yeah. Seven full-time, one reserve, and one school regional officer, so eight, and one reserve.
Same budgeted positions? You know, kind of, like, so-
So we have budgeted positions, the twenty-two, twenty-three, and have we filled all of those? Uh, as for the budgeted positions, we have two in the police academy, if they graduate, a conditional job offer, we can fill, but we gotta graduate.
When will they graduate?
June second.
Did the city think of those academies?
No. How many we got in that? Uh, we have two first plats.
So if those two get out of the police academy, we'll have to pick two on each shift, what we wanted, that's what we-
Yes.
Begging you to just put on the agenda and confirm it, and I've tried that. Finally got on the agenda, so I'm sorry it took so long. I'm sorry your family went through so much. But we are getting confirmation, hopefully. So, I'll make the motion to accept the confirmation of Officer Matthew Monterrez at the other police department, please also.
I'll second that. On the third? I'm sorry. We decided to do this.
Verbal.
Scott?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. All right. Now, we're gonna go back into executive session.
Can you lie?
For what?
For which I am.
One item? Don't want to get too mad.
So, it's for the second matter, Alyssa Dunleavy, executive session. For an interview with City Minister.
Duncan Levy, I asked to come back out so Matt could go home with his family.
And that's why I'm thinking of us deciding which comes they're going back for.
Okay.
I gotta put in the new driveway that turns almost a hundred and eighty degrees. It'd have to turn right.
Don't you ever read the back of the document?
Yeah, but I want that new garage, forty-two, I know four.
Oh.
And I wanna put two hundred and fifty thousand above it. So, the roof line will still match because I'm gonna take it down four feet. That way I can drive in. It's on top of the hill.
Okay.
And... So, I looked at it a million different ways, and it's the easiest. Man, I got all the rocks. I got all the rock, I got all the bricks. Well, I'm saying what's on the house. I got fifteen, twenty yards of that rock. Still, whenever we're building a house, and I got ten pounds of the brick that is on, that goes to the house. Still, I'd like to find the guy where he can break some stones.
Mike? Mike, someone says, since we have all the agenda items, can you make sure to speak into the mic? I can't hear you, apparently.
Tell them, I'll tell you what to do.
I have a minute and forty-two. I'm real disappointed.
Don't run score, run shutout, run shutout.
Real disappointed.
Let's go Vegas. Uh, he's watching the scores. Minute left, four zero Vegas. Said minute left, four zero Vegas. Yeah. I don't think people will be happy right now. Yeah, I'm in the Ed Mee camp, since I'm a Vegas fan, so nobody likes me here. I say I'm in the Ed Mee camp because I'm a Vegas fan.
All right. That's a quarter mile.
All right, we're gonna break the vein. And we're gonna start a discussion. Well, I think you have reports. Copper check.
I approve the beam.
Yes, we have to consent agenda for us.
Yes, we need to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, February seven, two thousand and three.
If you're right over us.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on February seventh, two thousand and three.
I'm starting ready.
Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Motion carried. The police department reports should be attached. Captain, is that correct?
I have no further. No further, no, I believe. I believe, he can tell us here now, if you would.
So, for the police department, we had a total of one hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. Uh, two arrests, one being a felon, one being a misdemeanor, uh, one being assault, one being drug possession. Uh, we bought fifty-three hundred dollars worth of stolen cases of copper. Uh, we made a total of one hundred and sixty-five track stops, thirty-eight result in citations, one point seventy-one.
What was the time period?
I think, uh, April first to April third.
How many officers do we have now? Full-time members there?
Uh, full-time, we have... We have seven full-time, one reserve, and one school resource officer, so eight, and one reserve.
Same budgeted positions. Can you turn them over? Thank you. So, we have budgeted positions, that's twenty-two, twenty-three, and have we filled all of those?
Uh, as for the budgeted positions, we have two in the police academy. If they graduate, a conditional job offer will give them, but they gotta graduate.
When will they graduate?
June second.
Did the city think of those academies?
No.
How many we got in that?
Uh, we have two first plats.
So, if those two get out of the police academy, we'll have to pick two on each shift, what we wanted, last week.
Yes.
Will we pull them?
Yes, yes ma'am.
How are our police cars looking? Like, do we need to start looking at tissue purchasing, go through that enterprise program?
We have four X-boards that are near two hundred thousand miles, and not looking great at all. Uh, our new Tahuhs, and if we keep running them, they're not gonna look good as well. Uh, so, yeah, I have made calls to Enterprise, their recent program. We have been with them, made thirtieth, go over what they can offer us, and see if we go through there. But we need new cars, because we're still running the Crown Vittit for our school resource officer, and that's two hundred plus thousand miles.
Can we please get that, that we need to do for chances?
Yes, sir. How many requests do you have in all these since they're...
Second.
Do you all buy one more can?
Do we buy in our hand?
Do you all buy more?
No, we do not.
They're putting this money on our hand.
Uh, yeah, and herpes, we were waiting on that, we're gonna have to come in, before we even, herpes.
So, he hasn't even?
That's right. That's why I was...
That's all I have.
Chief Joe?
We've been mayor and council. Uh, if I was unaware that we were gonna have reports tonight, I do know, I thought that Chief Lawler before that had done at the previous meeting a report for April. Is that not the case? No. I know that we would have a hundred and twenty-five calls for service for April. I thought that we were gonna talk about when we're out through May at this time, but, um, I can't give you a breakdown for how many medical calls or hard calls we ran from April until I got that report. Through the month of May so far, we ran eighty-eight calls, two structure fires, um, and I don't know the exact number of medicals, and then we have the other calls. That are hazardous type calls, power lines down, all night, having bad storms, we have a bunch of that.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Okay. There's a lot of calls for service tonight, two weeks ago when we had all the storms, we had a fire in Star Ranch neighborhood, lightning strike on a home there. But if you'd like, I can get some reports printed out in generator. Like I said, I thought Chief Lawler had done that for April, and I thought that we generally at first, he told me he didn't want to do any reports, so my apologies there.
What was your name and how long you been here?
Brian Thompson. I've been with government fire department since twenty sixteen.
And then, do we do each week, month?
Uh, took over for Chief Lawler on the sixth of May.
Yes, sir.
So, do you have the opportunity to have your equipment, and we can see if you have any needs?
Yeah, one of my first notices was, uh, the tornado size in the cities. Uh, we did the, the monthly tests, the first Wednesday of the month, and found that they were operational. Uh, we jumped on that, we got, it was batteries at the base of the, the siren towers, and we had those fixed before, the storms that hit that Saturday, I think it was a Saturday night, it was either a Friday or Saturday night, we, we had them fixed and operational again. So, they are up and working. Needs for the department right now were poor on bunker gear. Uh, we have six applicants wanting to get on the fire department, and we have gear to fit really large people, and not much for smaller frame people, so that's gonna be a need that we'll have to address. That's our biggest need immediately.
And for quite some time, gear has had a fine lifetime, correct?
Ten years, the Texas Commission on Fire Protection says after ten years it's outdated. So, we have purchased gear, uh, over the last several years, and, um, we are, we, our numbers have gone up, we've changed the environment at the fire station, uh, different culture, and we've got applicants wanting to come and be a part of the department, so we, we do have a need for gear.
Well, one of the things I would like to see is each department, uh, when y'all come back, set us this time, maybe a list, as we already, y'all be going into the vision, in the workshops, everything.
Right.
The things that y'all see that are immediate needs, so that we have not been, we're not guessing, or haven't seen individually, need to bring in where the community knows what you need, and maybe some of them that can get all discussed over time.
What is the average bunker gear to outfit one person cost?
Uh, pants and coat are about twenty-three to twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, public, twenty-hundred dollars boots, three hundred dollars gloves, eighty dollars, so no extra, so, uh, on the average, three thousand, about thirty-five hundred dollars.
Can you, can you put together some type of, maybe just a general estimate for the local people to give us to work on this?
Sure, yeah.
Typically, our, our bunker gear is through fire supply here in town, and so rich, I'm sure we'll break this up.
What about apparatus, age, is, are, do you have trucks that are listed, or are you over at, jumping out of the wood?
We don't have anything there currently. Our rescue truck, at Station One Rescue One, is pretty old, and it's, it's a maintenance cost for everything. We have a new fire engine, it's in great shape, and we're outfitting it to be able to handle all calls. It's a rescue bumper, so trying to get it outfitted to, to take care of it. Or the rescue bumper takes care of a lot of different things, so, um, you know, at some point, the amount of apparatus you have versus the amount of personnel you have, can you even staff every apparatus? Uh, we have, uh, a reserve engine that is considered aged, uh, engine one seventy-four. It just did come back from a refurbished though, and it's in good shape, but according to NFPA, it's considered old, maybe out of service. Our tanker's in good shape, tanker two at Station Two is in good shape. Uh, we'll just have to replace that air conditioning duct on, and that's, that's it. But overall, most of our apparatus are in good shape.
So, Rescue One is, do we need a new chassis or a block and stuff?
What most departments are going to do is a squad, and so, uh, I would lean more towards a squad. Most departments, depending on what their staffing levels are, will, uh, run an engine, uh, but they'll run a squad, if, if you have, you know, six people at the station, it's more cost-effective to run a Suburban or a something more along that line, out for a medical call. If we're low-staffing, I personally don't like the guys to go out in the station without a truck of water. If they're on nine fifteen on a medical call, and there's a fire on the south side of town, it's tough to come back to the station, change out apparatus, response times matter, and fire growth is more rapid than it used to be, so, uh, I prefer if we're low-staffed, that we're running the engine, if we have plenty of staffing, that they can use a, a squad, if you will, more often. I wouldn't go back with another rescue chassis, that's basically what I'm saying.
So, are we able to utilize the two F-150s with squads?
Currently, I'm using one F-150s, the assistant chief is using the other. We do have a, an older unit as a squad.
So, that one, the Chesapeake Davis?
I, I don't know the history, we're, it's a light.
F-250?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's on Chesapeake Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Public Works, Eric's not here. Did he turn in a report?
He did, it was provided to the council.
Okay.
So, we have a lot of spots around town where our third-party contractors go somewhere, and lift thirty yards and disrepair for the rooms that face rock instead of a topping. What are we doing about that?
When we can, we get some, uh, comb mix, and put that out. We didn't have a full Public Works staff done a couple of weeks ago, we had turnover. A couple that weren't doing too much, and that didn't busy long, but, uh, my understanding that Sixth Street was, uh, one of the worst places, and they were supposed to be on that this week. So, we're looking at, with our Public Works staff and equipment, we're looking to fill in potholes. And what we really need is, we've got some streets that are in pretty bad shape, but we're gonna have to issue bonds and, and get, get streets completely redone, or they're not gonna last. Because the, the comb mix, even if you use hot dust, it's not gonna last, with all the traffic. Our traffic on most of our roads is directly increased.
So, we have an interlocal agreement with Joshua, we talked about it before in the last couple meetings. Have we reached out to them and see if they have time, and you can help redo some of our...
They did call us and tell us that they had some local time, but then the rains came and the rain over, they, I don't believe they called us back, but, uh, I'll check with the Public Works guy and, see if he's had contact with them since he took the job. Because Joshua does have some equipment that if they're not using, they're willing to come over here and charge us, and he's, 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 he's very good.
Mayor, what kind of equipment do we have? Do we have a tractor, maybe a bucket?
I think we do have a tractor, bucket, probably.
Is there any chance?
Probably.
Clean up a six yard, ten, we've got the mounds of dirt out there, cones, and spent about a month driving there on three or four of this ground. Just move it out, Lawrence.
Was it something that the, our contractor, the other repairs, left?
Not exactly sure, it's just been there so long that it's, you know.
Okay. You have those, the results from repairs?
It was repairs, they, they had to dig the area up, fix something, but they just didn't smooth anything back out, I have to call them.
Yeah, normally the contractor's supposed to do that, but a lot of times, and we didn't have a Public Works worker, or we had one, it was, they had to call, we didn't yell at them, so. I'll grab that, I'll raise, and I'll, I'll check the Public Works.
So, he said, now says, he says that he has several ideas for improvements for the veterans memorial. Do you know what those are, do you have any knowledge of them?
Yeah, I'll be back. And which part are we referring to?
It says the veterans memorial site, it's a park, it's, I got the I C O on nine, nineteen eighty-six. As told, BFW is supposed to be maintaining that, and I took some pictures of it, and several ideas for improvements, but we'll have to have it put in the budget for the donations.
And Scott and I discussed this a little bit, it came up, and I think that the, it was originally put up by scouts, or it even got banned, is my understanding. I know it's been there a long time, so I wasn't involved in that, uh... Yeah, yeah, we did have the access, we said, we were, we were state cap, we were, uh... But, with Scott and I talking about that, that, that's not a job that we have qualified people and equipment to do. What we need to do is find a contractor to rebuild that. It's, it's split several years ago, and temporarily repaired, and they, it's kinda shattered. And there's been at least four names, name tags.
Three.
The veterans, pride of, apparent, and they're not over there. But I, I think we need to...
We don't have the record who those were, those people were, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of it, and then like I said, I love the, 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 y'all, somebody may have a picture of it from, that they jumped on, it was hobbled, and they had all the pieces. Might have to put some, put a query on it, see a website or something. We just have to, we just have to look for somebody to come in and... Never get them yet. I guess now that it's in the park, it'll let us take care of the tires.
I mean, I think he just needs to get ripped out, and we couldn't do it, and it actually honors those people. We'd be really proud of it.
I've always wondered the stories of who these people are. It'd be nice if someone could research and, and tell the story of who they were.
It would be nice, they're voluntary.
I wouldn't mind helping, so.
I guess. Does this need to be an agenda item?
I'm fine. I know that the ISD has an awesome Hall of Honor that they probably have a lot of history that, um, they, that would be a great place to start. I know Dr. Dear prides himself on being the historian. He would probably be a really good place to start to go down that road.
There's another gentleman that does the history of Godley.
Any, any, sorry, he said, he chose Dr. Dear, I remember asking about it.
Okay. Would that be the best place to start, but I bet it wouldn't be hard to find donations for that. It'd just be about poking around, to be honest with you.
So yes, I would like to make it a agenda item for June six to. Look at redesigning, breaking out, however you wanna word it, but something needs to be.
Thank you, sir.
Is this something that, can I have a ready or is this something that the, uh, this, this says something that, something to the community involvement or is this something that council handles directly?
We can budget it here. I don't know the public works. We may be able to come out of the four B funds. If we do that donation, we'll have to accept that donation a little bit instead of. I don't see us having to go in. A proposal or request me anything because it's not gonna cost fortunate money. We need those criteria. Would that be great? So I think we just need to make sure that.
I didn't really agree with you. He also has a little work like that. I think we can borrow his debt through the maintenance and kind of run there for more. Also, he can give us a mention, probably a call or something.
Joshua has one that's more comparable to Godley size as well now. Seen him?
Do you know of a city man?
The city park, is that the city park?
Nothing to say for municipal court, although we are planning on having a court on the.
Yes, sir. We have hired a municipal court clerk. She started a week and a half ago. We have been training her by a certified municipal court clerk has been training her through Zoom meetings. We are planning on having a court docket on June sixth and that'll probably be about half of the people that, um, have set up plus the juveniles. And then the next half that have requested a bit in the next few weeks, which would be July.
And what, what is the name of the municipal court clerk?
Her name is Marilena Hernandez.
So the school isn't here, is there anything you want to engineer in that simple step?
I think we had some plans.
I believe the truth is co- addition that was, that y'all had discussed back in November is supposed to come back on the agenda. Probably for the June sixth meeting, but that's the only one that I'm aware of at the time. And I know we do have some possible annexations that the city attorney's office is working on.
Did we ever set a meeting with the gentleman that came to whichever meeting it was, the high school that wanted to develop behind values and all that?
Yeah, I've heard you. They, they reminded.
Yeah, I believe that they have changed their mind and decided not to go ahead and go do that project.
I think they need to have the access to, like, the early warning or something, something about the.
Mayor, really, I'm just, let it play his piece.
Yeah, create your own, oh, yeah.
Is there any new burger on mine, chicken express or O'Reilly's?
Well, chicken express got to sign up and they're, we're getting their, I think, last week we were getting specs for what size.
Mushroom as the train.
They'll need to. Sewer tile or sewer pipe. So we're working on getting that, getting what they need in specs. But I, I'm thinking that they are, are ready to do this.
What about O'Reilly's?
I haven't heard of them or O'Reilly's.
I have not either. Would you like me to get in touch with the city engineer and see if he could come up with a, a list of items and what the progress is on them?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Where are they putting them on, putting them around with that?
In between, I think next up Bear Barbecue. Do you know the status of our package plan and how that's coming along? Or if we found a way to build a convenient sewer plant?
No, we're still working on the expansion down here that was scheduled to eventually come out and remove. But that developer, uh, changed his mind about giving us the property and paying for it. So a few bills he'll have to give his own system and plant, so we don't have that available anymore. So right now we're just trying to finish that down here, which will give us the capacity for wastewater treatment for some time. I don't know what that time's gonna be yet. We'll probably have to wait until, um, in action.
She, what about Coke and buns? Coke and buns?
Oh, we had thirty Coke pots, all green tags, starting with spring season, so practice a problem. So we gotta remind people, yeah, make sure they're yours. Didn't help that rain a lot, so it's kind of a separate effect.
Are we giving people green tags when we're not even keeping the city park open?
Well, city was, uh, also green back. They were part of the group, more than that were ten.
So you have a certain officer that does this each shift or does?
I have, I am certified over the council.
You are?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and do you know when you're on shift?
Yes, I also have help starting on that as well. I have also on shift as well, helping them help as well, kind of training.
So we have two, three that are working pretty much. So I'll keep an eye out for that day before.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So what are our options for grace and mercy while we don't do our own work?
Well, we usually put on their, uh, ten-day notice, but as long as they're making progress on whatever it is, we will walk them though. We're not gonna sidle. Uh, I look people in the past, as long as they're making progress, we see the progress being made, so we're gonna work on it.
Appreciate that. This is a little hypocritical, you know, hey?
Well, like I said, we did green tag the city as well.
And that's, you said there's thirty and that's for one?
Is there anything we can do about rubbish on the ground?
Uh, like tree limbs and stuff, um, come out of pride. Yeah, that, again, that's not allowed. Uh, we're trying to address it and try to educate citizens. And our, uh, people that own the park and stuff that, you know, we were, we're expecting citizens to do it, to expect our city workers to do as well. But we're gonna work on that and try to educate people on that and try to do streets clean.
What's the education that you're gonna, here you're gonna?
We already stopped talking, talking.
Are you able to put something on your Facebook page and tell a lot of people what you're gonna do?
Motorcycles will appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Maybe let's see if someone could put on our city website, Captain? Is that, is that, um, sort of community now? Cause our community turns to our city website to get information. So there's something we need to work on, looking at.
We don't have a city administrator, we don't have an economic development status. All right, discussion and action items. A, discussion and possible action on electing a mayor pro team. As you know, after an election or after a time where an election, we're scheduled, I did maybe vacancies.
Mayor, can you show me your microphone, please?
Okay, so we need to elect a mayor pro team. It can be the same person that it was. Before, we, we need someone, counsel to.
Make a motion that my whole advocacy continues as the mayor pro team, second. It's the end of the month, so thank you.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
He has to abstain. Mr. Godley has to abstain.
City, discussion and possible action on improvement and amended memorandum of understanding for, for the school resource office program between the city of Godley, Texas and Godley's district in authorizing the mayor or his adjutant to sign this agreement on behalf of the city government.
So last meeting, we did not accept it, tabled it again because there was not a fee schedule. And Julie's, I agree, that needed a fee schedule to outline exactly what we would pay, what they would pay. How does it be scheduled?
Kathleen, you know if we have a fee schedule?
Uh, no, ma'am.
You don't know or we don't?
We do know. So I just, uh, city attorney, we have been negotiating with the ISD for this MOU. Um, and I know that the comments were made from the last meeting, have been taken back to the ISD and we have not heard back. So we are at a standstill at this point. We'll reach back out and see if we can restart those negotiations. So we have to make another table that I'll.
So Kathleen, are they paying us one hundred percent currently? Or is there a salary benefit?
Yes.
Well, I don't really want any more billable hours than needed. So fee schedule, by the time we get back and vote on it, they're gonna have their own police department anyways. So I'll make a motion to approve the amended MOU. I guess I'll really go in the ISD and do the next.
Second.
Now the motion is second. Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Motion period. Discussion and possible action to accept the resignation of employing Hunter Ball, public works employee.
When did he retire?
His last day was the twenty, I'm sorry, his last day was the twenty-seventh of April.
So can he force him to come back?
He's already been in federal positions, relaxed at work. So we've stated the motion to approve this resignation, correct? And then the motion requires, uh, all resignation.
I'll say it.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Motion period. Discussion and possible action on scheduling date for budget workshops for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
So most cities have already started their budget workshops about two months ago. It is budget season. We don't have a whole lot of time. We need to get our department heads, have them come to budget workshops, discuss what they want first with me compared to what money we have, but we need to schedule some dates to do this. It would be before a meeting or on a Saturday or whenever.
I'm open. Let's get it done.
Have you started the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four?
Our former city administrator, the last seven days, started it.
How far along was he?
He basically had the old version, had mentioned the changes, Mark. That's probably new for me, so I have no expertise on like a present. So when we get, starting on workshops, get those things in.
So do we wanna do budget workshops prior to meetings, prior to the June sixth meeting, start looking at it? Cause all of our department heads should hear that maybe anyways to get reports.
I prefer that itself. Senator Better? Can we do five o'clock on June sixth, if the meeting is at the, 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 start six thirty? Yes.
Yes.
Is that working?
It should. I'm working, this is my last week for my, so it should.
Yes. We'll go.
Mr. Speaker, is that working? I'll make a motion to schedule a first budget workshop for June sixth at five P M. to six thirty E M.
I'll second. Have a motion for second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion, period. At five thirty to six thirty?
Uh, five. If you're going to schedule a budget workshop for June sixth, is that what we can schedule?
If discussion and possible action on candidates' resumes submitted, city got a position on municipal court clerk. And we've already hired municipal court clerk. We have three or four hundred, because she didn't get in yet, so we got court.
Microphone.
Can't hear you, but...
We've already hired court clerk and plan to have court on June sixth, first time that we're going to have court. Four months?
Seven.
Seven? That's all we got here.
So where was that job posting posted?
It was posted on T M L.
Did the candidate come from any T M L?
From what?
Did she come from T M L?
Uh, no, actually, uh, she is the block of one of the employees of Johnson County Automotive. And we've heard about that position.
We hired a spouse of our neighbors, what?
It possibly is, Johnson Automotive is a vendor, uh, being hired as a spouse. Now, you know, she is municipal clerk, doesn't make decisions regarding city business of the municipal court, because municipal court does kind of operate independent of the city. Uh, but it does raise a concern for me, and so I would like the opportunity to actually look a little bit deeper into that and be able to advise council on what actually needs to be taken.
Yeah, just for future reference, no spouses of vendors.
Okay, the election on that. Is she getting ready for the training? Actually, wouldn't we be able to do that if we were on administrative leave until us, so?
Again, because of her position, uh, I don't think it's necessary. Um, because she's not looking at contracts, she's not dealing with anything that the vendors try to be associated with. Um, but, you know, the sooner we can get this figured out, the better, obviously. Um, and if the council makes a decision that you'd feel more comfortable putting her on administrative leave, we can do that.
This, this doesn't appear to be a good look at all.
For those who does not own a business, but he doesn't work there yet. He's a mechanic.
What other vendors are gonna want to come and have their spouses work, you know what I mean? It's, it's just not a...
I'm gonna make a motion that we put her on temporary, uh, leave until we need to, at least, what, I mean, we need to... We can't just pull her out and bring her out.
Not yet, administrative leave, okay?
Yeah. With pay until we figure out.
Can we do a personal?
There's a motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Have a motion to second to place the court clerk on administrative leave to pay.
Aye.
Well, I want to discuss this before we do the session.
Sure.
So the action item is discussion and possible action on candidates. Candidate resumes mentioned, city got the position of municipal court clerk. We can't go into any actions that's not related to the resumes.
Correct, um, as far as formal action of the council is the best, and we're just giving direction to us. Um, and then we can take actions, putting on administrative leave.
I don't want to be on administrative, I don't want the court open. I do want it, I already, I guess this is to be made, Kathleen, make sure she doesn't deal with any... Because she's doing other stuff, she's not just working for the court one day a week, one day a month, because she probably got four days in a month, she actually builds a court. So all you have to keep coming in is you do some things, but she does pull off stuff, don't you, right?
Yes, sir.
She was today, well, I was there for that few minutes, so I don't want Kathleen to be put more work on. I don't want the court to be related, I don't want the lady dealing with any contracts. That'd be my fault.
Yes, sir. Basically, what, basically what we would have her doing is court and, um, just taking water payments. I would still be the one, you know, figuring out the water bills and that kind of thing, she would just be taking the water payment itself.
Again, just taking direction from you guys, uh, if with those parameters, if we can keep her in position, um, not touching certain contracts, things like that, uh, then we don't have to put her on administrative leave. I can quickly determine whether or not this is actually a conflict, probably before the end of the week.
No one moves backward. I agree with Roger.
I agree.
Uh, so for the motion that's been made and seconded, do we have a withdrawal of that motion?
How would you all want it? Yes, we're to the motion for withdrawal of the motion.
Okay.
So is she allowed any computer access, or she doesn't have to be a documentist, because we do use that company quite often?
No, sir, her work just evolves directly with N code, which is a program for our courts and the water. So she really doesn't have any access to any contracts that are...
I mean, contracts, bills payable?
No, sir, she will not have access to any of that. And then there's less, and then it has to be down the back.
All right. I'm at discussion and possible action on candidate resume submitted to the city government. Discussion and possible action on candidate resumes submitted to the city government for the position of city secretary.
So we currently only have a inner city secretary, we need to hire a city secretary. Have we put out a job posting for that? Right now, we're paying a pretty high price hourly, you know, we're paying mileage. Would be much better use of the taxpayer dollars to hire a full-time city secretary, whoever that may, that one will work throughout our files.
I agree.
Are we still paying that agency? Are we still paying that agency fee?
Yes, we, as long as she's in, we have paid.
On top of the salary.
Yes.
Have we got residents in for this position yet? Have we posted this within the past six months? Nope.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I don't have somebody. I don't know.
We did post it this year, yes, sir.
When?
I'll have to go back and check.
I mean, it's not recent, but it's been like January or February, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
So let's do the second amendment. I'm saying, let's take the resume we have and go over them like at next meeting. And the same as we're doing for the city manager, city administration.
Well, you said you have a one to do? So we need to post that, we need to post that, otherwise we're gonna run into the same problem.
Yeah, let's do the exact same one. You're posted? So I can see who we got, do we?
Mayor Bojman, you're gonna do the posting so that it gets done?
I can do all of the T M L, city website, posting on our Facebook page, it'll be now. I've never seen us post on any of the job boards anything like that, so I think it's created, I think, you know, it's created.
Is that sufficient in your opinion?
No.
I mean, I would like more, but I would like to go get outlined back in January.
Okay, why can't we do that?
We can. We all just have to get that direction. What's your time and power without really? One side fifty. I can update the job brochures pretty quickly. I just need to know a salary, whoever's gonna go with, I guess, who was making. And a job description to make sure that it matches up.
Jessica, was that, uh, just starting her, she ordinarily had that job before, right?
She was the pro boss for T, or assistant for her boss.
What is the budget for that? Say we can talk members who are familiar with what's the budget?
So it's not exactly broken down on our budget, our general government pitch is personnel salaries. For fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, the proposed was a hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and four dollars. Fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, actual was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I wanna apply. Just to be aware.
You're saying that our budget does not break down personnel salaries?
No, just by their... I mean, I didn't know what she made.
Well, I understand that I want to know what our budget, what, when we go into these, I mean, that hundred and forty-four? Four dollars, is that what you're really paying them? I mean, I guess there is a message, we have to talk to the board, the board is going to have this, this one chat, if we don't even know what we're going to be paying them.
Well, I mean, if we go off what she was making, then obviously I was, I mean, hopefully that was actually budgeted. Can't say that with certainty, but... This will be a big trip actually with her, so...
Were these salaries laid out along with the requirements that one late night after cast on the...
We decided on budget figures, or numbers, but they weren't budgeted numbers. They were numbers that we knew we were gonna have to give, because that's what the market demands. So we have lots of miscellaneous funds in our budget that money can be pulled from. As I was told before, money can move around in governments. So if they act accurate budget number, I know...
But typically, move money around, is that not called for amendment to the budget?
It does require amendment, only in certain circumstances, usually if it's some sort of, um, uh, like, uh, emergency. If there's a specific type of emergency, um, that you can not reallocate those funds. Otherwise, the budget, it would require budget amendment.
So out of that hundred and forty-four, we're not really sure if we exceeded that hundred and forty-four, what we're paying anyone really right now. I mean, or what that, well, the truth is, really, I mean, be honest.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, budget salary, Brock, this state of this tech of paperwork that I have at home?
Yeah, I'm not trying to argue, but you won't trial, I'm just saying in general, she doesn't. We have no explanation for these people out here, of what that work went for.
No, I'm not looking at that.
So we're talking about posting, don't worry, why are we looking at that? So we're talking about posting, why are we looking at salary?
Does TML have a, uh... Other public for those positions that they're working market change?
Um, I can get ahold of the lady who's over there association speaking. I'm saying administration, their association goes out with a very large document, what everybody needs. Created by population level here, areas, so.
So basically, we need to figure out what we're hiding and keep track of the correlation to postings.
What you're gonna do is for, hold on.
So we'll get an exact figure, but it's between fifteen, sixty thousand is what we're entering.
That's just salary, that's not benefits?
That's correct.
Are benefits included in that one forty-four, or is that just strictly salary?
Just strictly salary.
So we need to make motions to the...
Won't be a much, it'll be similar to the previous ones, and the way that this is actually written is to take action on candidate resumes initially the city. And so if that took the R M B, no action, um, just council direction, we're posting. And then we'll have agenda item ninety-six, we'll actually go over those resumes.
So how would that be work, make a motion to you?
No, no action.
If I'm giving direction to you, he would like to take that?
How about we post it?
I mean, the budget brochures are already paid back in January, so I just gotta update those. I just need, once again, job description and pay.
And I'm happy to provide the job description for the city secretary for posting.
Okay, let's hope we already had that. Go back into that. That late, late night. Eleven thirty. Was that not right?
Was that in January?
January third.
The same with the cast.
Thank you for your presentation, your PowerPoint.
So you obviously need to give direction on what we would like to enable like, or...
What's the format to give direction?
Talking to the mic?
I talked to the mic to give the mayor of Tim direction to... Do what these candidates need to do. Position to stint on your job salary. Of motion for addition.
So are you going to be using this salary comparison, or is that me? Could that go, would that go with the bargain, same rate?
Yes, we know it's a, I mean, we, we're posting, we're gonna have a salary, but most people don't understand.
Yeah, I'd recommend we at least have a range.
So along with the job description, I have to kind of provide, uh, because TML, they're, all those postings are out there, they're public, go through them. Pop up secretaries, um, see what those ranges are, um, and then I can work with, you know, Mr. Habers on putting a range together. Um, is there a range that the council is comfortable with, knowing what the previous city secretary was paid?
Five. What I say.
Just a flat fifty-five, or?
I start there.
Okay, so a fifty-five thousand plus, uh, depending on, uh, experience?
So the city of Duncanville pays ninety-four to a hundred and thirty-seven.
There are a lot of words.
Garage central pays sixty to seventy thousand.
The thing that we need to understand too is that if we're looking for an experienced person that has qualifications to step into these shoes and move forward, we've gotta be able to pay them to do that, with the qualifications.
What if we do salary?
He's still wanting to arrange.
Yeah, of course.
Arrange, but it's not.
Yeah, we can add that, I'm sure as well. Do we still wanna start with fifty-five thousand plus, based on experience being negotiable?
We'll be showing you the picture, you know that. You have to pitch it to us. There we go.
Does it indicate no action? City secretary on G, wait for your bond, you guys.
Okay, so you show this.
Yes, TML has a salary survey. But we'll just start with fifty thousand, negotiate.
Do we have a motion for that?
We won't need a formal, we just need somebody to indicate no action, to get the decision that I'm...
So action needs to be, it's a good item.
Hey. Correct? Discussion of possible action on candidate resumes submitted to the city government for the position of city administrator. Take care of that. We did that, we did that, I bet.
Well, I was guessing what was discussed in the executive session. Uh, yeah, the council knows, we had executive session to interview, uh, candidates this evening. Uh, we, the council has elected to repost, um, that position. Uh, and so we will do the same as we've done with city secretary. Um, repost that position, Mr. Habers will assist on that. Um, I believe the range, um, previously posted, we'll stick with eighty to a hundred thousand, if you guys are comfortable with that. Um, with the intention of, at June sixteen, we'll again go through the resumes received, um, and pick who we want to interview at that time.
So we need to say that we don't wanna take action at this time, correct?
Correct.
Make motion, we break them right now.
No motion.
Out of my evidence. Discussion of possible action concerning personnel matters regarding city attorney, ask the department to follow the evaluation, reassigned, duties, discipline, or dismissal, or to hear complaint or charge against an officer or employee.
So I would just ask, the way that this is, is written, this is an executive session item, it's a personnel matter. Um, if you, the council chooses to discuss and take any action on this, as the personnel, the subject of this, of typical agenda item, I would just ask that we, uh, take this executive session.
I'll let y'all make the decision if we want. Continue, or we're just stuck until we hire a full-time permanent?
I'm moving that we take no action at this meantime, on this, uh, item. Jay. Discuss, discussion of possible action of resolution declaring no confidence in the ability of WHF Wyman to represent the city of God.
I say we can take no action on this agenda item. I disagree with that.
Yeah.
I want that on record.
Okay, discussion of possible action of resolution declaring no confidence in the ability of the mayor, A C McGee, to represent the city of God.
Uh... I did a little reading last night in chapter twenty-two, and apparently, uh, in chapter twenty-two, what's being referred to, what I think I'm interpreting here through this item and item N, uh, the procedure is not how you deal with, uh, removal of an elected official. That's dealt with in chapter twenty-one. And, uh, you have to go through the district court, uh, and submit a, uh, I don't remember what it's called now, uh...
Petition.
Petition with the, uh, district court, uh, to, uh... It basically goes to a court proceeding possibly, and, uh, that is how you remove an elected official. I've also seen where, uh, something about a recall election, but that does not apply either to a general law type A city. That's only in the, uh, for a, uh... Home rule, yes, home rule, new term, home rule, and that's only if it's in their charter. So, uh, because of that, the way this is worded, uh, you really can't take action as it's worded. A citizen of the, of the city can, following the chapter twenty-one, got, got it.
That is correct.
Well, I don't know, but I will, this is, this is declaring no confidence in taking the race. But the last six months, we've really, but, we've been all kinds of issues, basically by not telling people what was going on. We've had discussions about that in the past. Oh, I hired this person. Okay, that's great, when did you hire him? I hired him two weeks ago, nobody knows about it. Uh, I made Officer Candrell chief, which is fine, but why didn't we get told about it? Hey, this, we the chief, put this out there, we don't know them, everything is, no, everything is hidden, everything is kept away from us. We have, as the council, no way of talking to our attorney unless it goes to A C. And when people up here have asked the attorney, another attorney, and more or less said, no, 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 I can't help you, I can't help you. No, the city has not been ran good the last four or five months. I'm not looking to get rid of A C, but I definitely want a complete change. I want six, one, two, three, four, five, six of us to permit that we open the city, people know what's going on. We tell each other what we do, we don't, as far as legally possible, we don't make decisions, and then by the way, this is what I did, it's like we're hiring somebody. We're going out of our way to make sure we hire people, and we're talking about it, that hasn't happened. We could have had every position filled months ago, but we didn't, because nobody wanted to do anything, or something, I don't know why. That's my, that's my decision, sir.
Agreed. I say you've lunged your way with all due respect. You kept the city closed, you locked it down on...
No, I didn't lock it down, I opened it up.
You closed the city down, sir, and you kept it locked down because you wanted to wait until an election. And you lost, sir, with all due respect.
With all due respect. The city hall's been locked.
I'm not saying it's been, the doors have been locked, but we're, practically, we have no employees, sir.
How many times have we had employees on the agenda? How many times have we talked about salaries? How many times have we talked about when we were gonna hire somebody?
You've lost your way.
Oh, here we go.
Sir.
Here we go.
Why not just, why not just own it?
Yeah, why don't you cut him data, give him, give him a hug.
Let's just, let's just, everybody's calm, everybody's calm.
And, and, and either work with us or go home to Mr. McGee and your, your children and your grandchildren. And let someone step in who wants to, to get the sale back. I mean, you don't want to be here, you don't have. Why stay? I just don't think you wanna be here, you're, you're flipping people off, and the puppy didn't flip me off. But you, you made that, you know, you got, you lost your cool. And you're just not, you, I don't think you really want to be here. And if you don't wanna be here, go home. It's okay, take, take the legacy that you have. And let's, let the city move on, do some work, get some stuff done.
I do know that...
No disrespect, no disrespect intended at all, it's just, I just don't think you really want to be here. And you have not been, I apologize. And you have not done a good job, sir. You have not. Roger's right. I think any objective observer would say that. I think you have, you have, you hold that things would return back to the way they were. And that you could run the city as Mr. Wallace did, but it's just not gonna be that way.
No, I didn't, I did not know to re-administer.
I understand what you're saying, I didn't say it to charge.
As mayor, I felt necessary to reopen the city hall, and we did that. So I hired Kathleen.
You, you and your attorney have kept the...
You're gonna let me go, are you gonna, you're gonna laminate the conversation?
Maybe.
Okay. Next item.
That's your city council.
The only thing that I would like to say is that when I came...
The only thing that I would like to say is that when I came up here for, when this election started to do my candidacy and to find out and inquire about it, the doors were locked. I sat out in front of the city hall for forty-five minutes knocking on the door. I called, I said after forty-five minutes, I finally got to touch with someone. And I was told that per the mayor's instructions, the city hall was to be locked down even though we had an employee inside, was to be locked down and it was not to be opened. That to me is interference into the electoral process. Because when other candidates or people we have came to the door looking for information, that information was, this door was not open and someone may in that moment decided to change their mind and said, come out here. To me, that's an interference in that process. It should have, especially during election time, should have been open. Information should have been given out to anyone that wanted to run. That's, and we had an employee. And I do know who it was because I still have the employee. So that's where my opinion comes in.
We've been on this for eight hours today, four months. It's not just about being open. We're an hour off for dinner, door's locked for lunch.
Mister Mayor, it's not just about being open, okay? Okay, so there's an employee in here. How about efficiency? How about service to the people? It's not being done.
When you got one person that's constantly answering the phone.
It's her culture.
That's her job.
Exactly. She was doing her job. She was answering the phone. She was.
She shouldn't have been doing that, I have to say. She shouldn't have to be doing all this work by herself. These positions should be filled already. And they could have been filled in December. You wanted to wait until the election was done. The election is done.
We have to heal. We have to do forward.
Six months, man. Six months, the city has been in a standstill. Can't knock that out.
I've hired people. I've got public works fully filled. They're doing jobs. They're working every day.
Your council people don't even know what's going on and they're asking you. And you, Roger Brunelson is not a man who's just suddenly against you. But he's over here and he's frustrated. We're all frustrated. Why are we frustrated? You're the leader of the city, sir. This should not be happening. It has to stop. Can't continue like this. Go home to Mrs. McGee. I don't think she likes you up here all this late.
I don't like you.
I know. I hear you, neither.
But I'm the mayor. I'm going to try to do my job.
I understand that. I understand. I appreciate that. I, again, no disrespect, but I have no confidence. That's all it is about, about no confidence. I don't have any confidence in Wyatt Hamilton and Finley. I don't have any confidence in you. And I don't think the people do either.
Nope.
No people do.
And they're being served.
The past six months have been a dark cloud over our little town. We've been on news stations nationwide in those six months, not for things that we have done great, but rather for things that made our city and the government body look like fools. And I ran for council back in twenty-twenty. I ran on increasing transparency and bettering public health. The roads today have been long and tired many times. I spent countless hours poring over local government code, reading attorney general opinions, studying case law, and researching agenda items in each council back up to the detriment of my family, my friends, and myself. I didn't do this for myself. I did because I felt that those who elected me deserved that.
You're right.
The actions that you have taken have exhibited, or the actions that you have exhibited over the past year have been appalling. We have witnessed you tapping on council members to get them to make a motion, second motion, and even vote a second way. We have seen you yell at members of the public during meetings and go as far as threatening and motioning for officers to remove members of the public when they did something you didn't like, but were completely within the law. I'm embarrassed to say, but you have what I would consider flipped off a council member of ours. You have excluded the city council from the majority of decisions, even going as far as having a city council member arrested for charges either the district attorney or the county attorney got touch, just so that the agenda items would result in a tie and you could break that tie. It wasn't until.
You're ready.
That we approved the February seventh meeting minutes because of that. City has been running a little stepping due to your inactions, incompetence, and stonewalling. If you would have informed us about reservations when they happened, we could have called a special meeting to start recruiting applicants and filling those positions immediately. Instead, you held that information for as long as you could to the detriment of the city and the community. This is just a small sampling of how you have shown incompetence, efficient misconduct, and total disregard for the city and the community. A truly sad scenario we have found ourselves in. With all this information, I officially lost confidence in you, Mr. McGee. Lost confidence in your ability to lead the city or represent in any way in this current, in your current capacity as mayor. I understand this vote will not remove you as mayor. That can only be done by following a break petition for removal in the district order of Chums County. This resolution shows the community as a council will not sit around idly while you try to run the city in the ground. And we are here to do the people's business, not just to select you. I understand that majority of this council is new, but you have seen what I described. As events continue to unfold and he continues to parade the citizens of this community, how long will we as a governing body put up with the tyrant of professional actions that he continuously exhibits? You have a choice to make today. You must take it seriously and with the utmost care. We are all liable for the actions of the city.
So do we need a motion here? I need, I make a motion to accept the resolution declaring no confidence in the ability of, I'm sorry, uh, no confidence in the ability of Mayor A.C. McGee to represent the city of Gotham.
So there is no second. I make a motion to pass the resolution declaring the vote of no confidence. That is the position of the city council to call for Mayor A.C. McGee to resign as the mayor of Gotham. Here, is the resolution. It was just passed by the city of our borough, so I know it's true.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
Make a motion for a second. I second that motion. I.
Yes.
I'm standing.
Yes.
Yes.
What's the format of this, Mike? What's the format of this?
Ask for it.
Who signed it?
I mean, it needs to be filled out, but I guess in the box will actually be corrected.
I will. Discussion and possible action on an RFP for a forensic audit of the city of Gotham.
What are we doing with this? Have we got applications that we got people wanting to do it for? What are we, what are we, um?
Last meeting, we requested for the attorney to write an RFP based upon the guidelines that he talked about. Is that done?
Uh, we do not have a final draft. I know one of the issues is the scope. Um, we will have to identify the scope of services so people know what they're actually submitting for. Um, I believe at the last council meeting, it wasn't very clear. Um, we just kind of told everything. Um, so we really need some clarification. We're going to actually get anybody to submit to that proposal. So if we can get further clarification on the scope, then we will be the right, if you guys will do it.
What does the regular annual audit for the city, uh, it's a timing on that?
Yeah, the normal model. I think it's almost complete, but I'm not sure what they lack.
Yes, they, they are in the process of working on it. I haven't asked them for anything recently. But I can get in touch with them tomorrow to see what they're lacking or what we need to get, to see if we can leave it.
Of our normal model?
Yes, of our normal model.
But when does that usually? I'm, I'm used to the school business. Normally they would come in November, December, and then we would have a report, January, February meeting. Uh, and I know y'all are on a different timeline. So what's the usual timeline?
I believe that they did it. I'd have to go check, but I believe last it was presented to them in either May or June.
Okay. Where's a copy of last year's?
Do what, sir?
Last year's on it.
Do we have a copy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Would you like a copy?
Please.
Yes, sir.
I'd be like a copy of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-one as well. I think you know the recipe.
Sure.
In this, uh, regular audit, do they come through every department, every, I mean, personnel and, I mean, every department? What, what is your scope that they give you? I'm not positive since I've never done an audit with the city of Gotham before. But I know in the past, they'll go through and they'll look at the books and they'll, they'll also ask for copies of all the minutes to make sure that all the proper procedures were done as far as if you have to take bids for items. And that kind of thing. And they'll just do like a random testing of items to see if we have all the proper materials for that. So they look, they compare minutes to the budget? Yes, ma'am. So it's just a fraction of what the city is complete, right? It's just. It's not the end numbers. Correct. And every year they do it, is it the same splitter? Or is it, is this kind of changed around in the city? Does that make sense what I'm asking? Why is it, is it the same path that they go or is it, because if it's a sliver of the whole pot, is it the same sliver every year we're looking at? I don't believe so, but I would have to look through previous audits to be able to tell that.
So seeing a part looks more at our financials than it goes to anything else. A forensic audit is to look for direct, uh, areas.
In the Vegas or in?
In our financials.
Just the financials?
I mean, forensic audit, you choose what financials you want to look at, whether it's by department or you have to look at how we're on the scope.
Because they also go through the personnel so that we can make our HR method? Or is it just, just financials?
At least just four or five issues. To look, like, since our budget is rounded off, and you're working the numbers. You have miscellaneous accounts in prior years, you have miscellaneous accounts over thirty, forty thousand dollars. I have no idea what that money means. I asked the budget meetings. And wasn't really told at all that money's used for unexpected things.
Not good. Not good.
They pay for different things.
So our previous city administrator did, they have a hundred percent control of the budget? Or weren't there any secondary accountability systems put in place to know where our money was going? And if things were over budgeted, that's it? If you're aware of that.
I mean, he holds big control of lots of this council, but as far as I'm a mayor, probably Dexter and I involved. He basically took the budget, when you have the budget amendment came to figure, we did it.
Counselor, if we hire another administrator, is there a secondary net we can put around that for accountability of what's being spent? So they're not just having free rein of the budget?
Uh, yes, you can put a limit on what the city administrator has the authority to spend. Anything above that has to come in council.
Mayor, go tell me I have copies of those CAFRs as well.
Also, to Kathleen Sheik, it's a, uh, issue.
But the past CAFRs are a core mission?
We're still talking about city business.
Any discussion of city business? Also, does the forensic audit also come into credit cards, Amazon accounts? Um, anything that we have set up to pay directly, does it also come through all of those items as well for, or are those just a general sum credit card things?
It can look into whatever we want it to look into.
Just have to define that scope?
We have to define a scope. Your initial amount's going to be tens of thousands of dollars to initially find out. And from there, if nothing's wrong, maybe if there's some wrong, you have to take deeper. You spend more money.
From what I'm seeing, there's not an accountability on our financials. I mean, clearly, when we get a hundred forty-four thousand dollars, we don't even know what it's going to. So I'm personally in for any audit that can lay us a foundation to build off of. If we don't have a foundation to build off of, how can we be accountable to these people out here with their money? When we're sitting here telling them right now that we have a hundred forty-four thousand dollars, God damn it, no more stuff. I'm sorry. Whether it's called an annual audit, whether it's called a forensic audit, I really don't care how you label it. We need a clean foundation to work from. Because as a council, we have to have accountability to the people.
So it's not just accountability to the people, the position that you hired. They're going to want to start from a clean slate, knowing that nothing was wrong. There's not going to be a big chunk and they're going to be the.
Exactly.
Fall back for it.
Well, yeah, I don't want to be responsible for those performing. So in order to, clearly, we have already brought up those issues. There's nobody that has all the answers. So we need some type of audit. If this is a sliver audit and it's not providing the permission that we need, maybe we'll waste some time on that one. maybe we'll waste some time on that one, where we need to focus on it some more in depth. So does we have clarification on where the money is?
Well, we're required to have that annual audit every year for evidence.
So we'll have to have that additional queue?
Yes, we have to have a CAFR every year. A forensic audit would be on top of that. Like I said, it looks more deeper into it. The CAFR is the find of overall financial health of the city. They don't look at a lot of stuff. It's just a broad overview. The forensic audit goes into why are we rounding off into the thousands, why are we spending this? Where, where is that asset back now?
To accountability.
Yes, and that all depends on the scope that we set. And the scope can change after we hire them and things are renegotiated. But the defined scope has to happen so that they can send out an RFP and they can give us something about what they're gonna do.
What do we need to do to discuss possible action? Do we have a budget for something like that? That's a tricky question. Is there a minimum? What are we looking at based on, just like I'm talking about, ten thousand, forty grand, or early goals?
Yeah, I constantly stand on you to tell you.
So what do you want the scope to be?
We're already giving that for time.
So we need to, if we want a forensic audit, we need to figure out what we want in a forensic audit and what we like to be. Then from there, our, you know, we say, yeah, we're not saying that we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars. We're just asking for bids, and then it comes back to us, and then we vote on those bids. If it's too high, we don't want to do it, because the council wants. But this just gives direction to send out that RFP.
Well, I feel like we were voted in here for a reason. I feel like we were voted in here to approve the city board, and my personal opinion is the way through the city board is to start with the sliver, to be accountable to the people where the money is. The only way that I, I can even be accountable is if we have a professional organization that comes in and figures it out. Because I see, I know, I know, I know, I know, I mean, you know, we don't, we can't see where...
Do you think so?
And we're not saying that anyone's done anything wrong. We're not saying that we're pointing fingers or looking for anything specific, but as a new council, we're trying to move things different. And the only way to do that is to know what we're, what we're building from.
Well, that was a beautiful speech, but we still need a scope.
Have a good scan?
No, what we want to look at is that we have to be clear in the RFP.
So what are the options of things they can't look at? You said funding? I mean, is that not citywide? Is the budget not citywide?
Yes, but we need to break it down what we want to look at.
The budget, everything.
So if, if it's helpful, we have other clients who have put out RFPs for forensic audits. I can get y'all a sample, uh, that includes the scope of services, like what some of these other clients have CDA's worked and got it for. We can go over that. We can pick and choose which we like. We can strike, we can ash, but at least it will give you a starting point.
I own this RFP longer, so...
Thank you.
This one says investigation, research, and answers relating to questions regarding compliance with generally accepted accounting practices. Factually, investigation, interview, and document review. Determine that they are in compliance with all guidelines of the GAT. Very want to analyze utility billing process, include meter reading process, new account creation rate analysis, bill calculation, bill granting, bill issuance process, and supporting documentation, utility adjustment process, incorrect consumption inputting, incorrect payments applied. Want to look at the city accounts, the collection, closing and activating accounts. For collection process, in person payment collection, utility bills, in person payment collection for tickets, permits, et cetera. Online payment collections, announced registered review, missing registers, technology audit, water shut-off and turn-on process. Prepare and present a summary of those findings. I can hold them up all day long, but... What are we wanting to look at, don't tell me question?
Two thousand and eight. What would you raise for an addition? Works very cool. Every dollar should be two. I mean, that's...
I would start small, and just start looking at your general accounts, your utilities, your, your payments.
And then we can expand from there.
Credit card?
Credit card.
Yeah, that's the thing. We can, we can start out with what we want for something to get started, and then expand. All right. Kind of like that negotiable salary thing.
Credit cards?
Yes. Credit cards, Amazon loans.
Every dollar spent in the city. Just pick a year.
We didn't choose. We talked about choosing items for a certain dollar amount. That's the way we want to go. Larger cities, larger amounts. I would expect we buy a whole lot of stuff.
Or we gotta start at two fifty?
I believe that was what it was discussing.
Two hundred and fifty.
Thousand?
Dollars.
Dollars.
So any of that, two hundred and fifty dollars that needs to be checked in here, that we are...
So I was trying to prepare this for you, and I asked for the all detail reports for the last couple of years so I could sort and filter that into a spreadsheet and do different amounts, five hundred, two hundred and fifty, and see how many transactions there are, but that's been stonewalled, so...
Why? Why can't we get that information, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know where that information is. I'm the mayor. You're gonna have to ask the city administrator to resign to all the things coming here.
You're the CEO of the city, Mr. Mayor.
I'm the mayor. Five hundred dollars, we'll put these in the credit card, Amazon account.
Five hundred, two hundred?
Five hundred. Just start off, and we, because we have problems with Robert Downey. Let's put something in there.
One dollar.
Where are we usually, how do we find more problems, or try to find problems on, uh, budgets? So be in the credit cards and...
Your asset list, your...
We can add to this, we can go for what we have.
If you return something on Amazon that goes to your personal account, wherever you bought it off of, it doesn't go back to the card?
So do we have city account set up on Amazon and all these different places that are not bothering personal account? With that bar?
It's on a city challenge, so I assume the city body.
On payroll, that's gonna make sure we're paying people all the taxes and retirement programs and everything, like credit cards. We go into payroll, what they do. Or give you the payroll, you can only not, not my check, but also my payroll. My retirement plan, my, my insurance, everything else, only if we're doing that problem.
Allocation of assets.
This is what's hilarious. Kind of why I want to do an asset list, because that's still what we have, I hope.
If you don't want to do that, we'll get, we'll start forming some asset list for us, rather than whatever we choose.
Purchases over five hundred dollars, credit cards, Amazon accounts, asset list, payroll, and deductions. That's what I want to start with. How, how far back?
You say deductions?
Uh, payroll, payroll.
How far back?
It's just been years and years and years. I just want to find out where we're at, and move forward, make sure we're discussing.
So the people that I've talked to about this, who have certifications in this, recommend at least five years. If they're, that way it can trend can be established, because it's only schools money per... Thought, let's say, seven years. People that thought, you're not gonna notice it, they just think it's settled. They say five, if you start now, is good, and they can usually tell, they can start seeing those trends, because they're trying to do that. And if they, they report back to us and say, hey, we think something's going on, then we can go back there. So they're gonna want to dive deeper into it.
I just want to know where we're at, and we want to move forward. They need to find this, but there's no irregularities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I made a motion that we had acted on an RFP for a forensic audit for city of God lead, and in that audit, we concentrated on purchases over five hundred dollars, credit card accounts, Amazon accounts, form an asset list, payroll and payroll deductions. To start off with, see what that is. Nope. You want to add that to it? I mean, we gotta have something, depending who we want to go and where's that put up now. Uh, Pinder, it's a good idea. I'll add that to mine.
Uh, that submission. And just to clarify, did your motion include a timeframe?
It did not. Uh, June sixth. I, you know what, can you tell me what the timeframe should be?
Now, how far back in one of those?
Oh, five years. We can never sue much, you know.
Yes, yes.
Y'all are doing great.
Next, uh, discussion of possible actions proposed to all city positions reviewing applications and possible hiring to fill those positions.
We need to find out what's not filled, and get that started, uh, right now, we've got... City, we take care of those next, and then we make the list of what other positions are open. And we start following through on those. In two weeks from now, we start, we, at our next council meeting, we post whatever else is left.
What is left is how city, the city secretary?
The other possibility is city attorney.
I do remind you, I am the inner city attorney, so if you guys want to post for a city attorney, again, I'm one of those municipal officers, um, that council has the ability to hire. Um, so you can always prepare our, for the city attorney as well.
Let's do that, and, you know, I don't, we gotta watch what we already have, because when we take care of those, we... We, who would hire Kathleen to help her?
Who's doing that?
I know she has a lady in there now, but that lady is looking, they should go to court. So who, last time, there were two people plus a part-time lady in there, correct? A young girl, a...
Oh.
A part-time, so...
During summer, during college semester, yeah.
So is Kathleen, who, how do we, how does Kathleen get that, another person in the office to help take care of all this business? Because the camera's moving, even.
Um, because that's general staff, that would be the mayor if he's the person who's acting at the time, or your city administrator if he's putting it there.
That's not something we gotta worry about.
Do we wait, if we want to create new positions, do we need to do that in the vote yet? Or can we do that now, and that we have a paid staff six months? We should have been paid.
Uh, if you'd like to create another position, I don't know what official positions we have currently, uh, in addition to municipal clerk. I don't know if there's a separate spot for a larger clerk. Uh, I don't know if there's a separate spot for, uh, an assistant city secretary, um... Hermit clerk.
Oh, I was talking about HR director.
Wouldn't this all be come up in our new budget?
That's what I'm asking. We don't need to wait, but then we don't spend that money for six months on a lot of, uh, salaries. Do we have the money now to start a new position now, and then...
We blow most of your salary on city attorneys. What we need to do is we want to hire a attorney, after we get to hiring a city secretary and a city administrator. So, do we need to do anything, or just table that till later?
I would just table that till later.
All right. All right, book the paperwork.
I'm in.
Just those, take both.
Sorry, I see.
Oh, on the, okay, the tables, all right.
Thanks.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. In discussion of possible action regarding concerns coming in by many citizens to act regarding the removal of the mayor and city attorney due to lack of confidence.
That was covered in a J, so I might have made that through the...
There's just no action on that.
Same with the, we already discussed that.
Just for the record, if we can read O. If you can read O.
I don't know, discussion and possible action regarding setting up workshops for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four legislature.
It's a recommendation of E, so, no action.
E, discussion on agenda setting policy.
What time is it?
Forty-eight. Twenty-three, forty-eight.
Uh, let's table that, make motion to table I D.
One second. You go first.
Yes.
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 I'm ready. We need to, we need to talk about that. So, I have a few discussions, the mayor, the board, the city park, I'd like to talk about that.
If you feel that it's been discussed, you can, I would go ahead and just take them out.
Then we add that to the.
And actually, it's a discussion item only, um, so.
We did, we added that to the six, you like. So we need to take an election on.
And there's no action to take because of the way the agenda items are written, it's just for the question.
Okay, got it.
The council has been invited to attend graduation, which K. Jeff Hoffman, last year at the school. If you'd like to let me know.